Time is 7:01. I will call a common council meeting to order. Do we have roll call please? Iverson.
Here.
Schotzinger.
Here.
Reimer.
Here.
Gallops.
Here.
Renert.
Here.
Godsky.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Lord, we pray tonight for this council meeting. Give these council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate over the items before them. May every decision that they make be righteous in your sight and for our benefit and your glory. And, Lord, over this holiday season, may your hand of protection and blessing be over our city of Ripon. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Been moved by David, seconded by Doug. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. No one has signed up for public comment. Next is acceptance of informal reports from standing committees and staff. Is there a motion to approve as published?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, it says written.
Second. Been moved by Steve, seconded by John. Any discussion or would anyone like to discuss individual reports? Doug?
I'd like to pull the financial report, the check registry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask about the bills for Associated Vet Clinic and what was that for and a little bit about those payments.
Associated Vet Clinic is for the canine rony, so medication for the canine. So there's, and dog food. So that comes out of the donation fund and reimbursed to that.
Okay. I just wanted to bring attention to that because if someone wanted to donate some money for that fund, they could. We would just contact the city and we would help out that. Badger meter, just down a little bit, for $1,642. Could you tell us what that's about?
Badger meter or Badger Labs?
Badger meter.
Badger meter is water meters.
Okay. And Civic Plus LLC?
That is our hosting of our codification, our code of ordinances online.
Good. And then Popalock of Northeast Wisconsin?
We had, I think I forwarded you the email on that, but that was the rekeying of Selfridge Park's maintenance door.
Okay. And it, one that caught, it really caught my eye was Reindeers Incorporated. You've explained that, what that is to me, but I just thought, you know, it was kind of Christmasy and kind of bring that up. So could you just tell us what that was about?
That was the Toro motor, or the Toro lawnmower replacement is an assembly part.
Right. I remember talking about that a few months ago. And then one last one. And could you explain the Wisconsin Rural Water Association and how long we've been a member?
Training for Travis Dobbs.
How long have we been a member of it?
Forever.
Forever? I didn't, I didn't know that we had been. So that's all I had.
Common thing every year. We do a membership to them and I believe the Wisconsin Wastewater Operators Association.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Yes, there's no more discussion. All those in favor of approving or accepting the informal reports from standing committees and staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Next is a consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve as published? The common council minutes from 14th and 27th of November.
I will make a motion to approve the council minutes for November 14th to November 27th.
I'll second it.
I've got the motion by David, seconded by Ellen. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right. Our first agenda item is the approval of alcohol, or alcohol beverage license request by Canute Brewing Company at their new address of 230 Watson Street.
Now, is this technically in addition to the one that they have existing?
So yes. So this is a new application. The current, the current issue license across the street is not for an intoxicating liquor license. It's just for a beer or fermented malt beverage. So this is the larger license. So it's a new application.
Okay. Thank you.
And with this license, it includes beer, liquor, and wine.
Mm-hmm.
Full license.
Full license.
I move we approve the alcohol beverage license requested by Canute Enterprises LLC, Canute Brewing Company, 230 Watson Street for the period of December 12th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Ellen, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion on this one? Jolene?
Being that I see that David Canute is here with us right now, I like to always give an opportunity. If there's anything that they, he would like to say, the person that presented something, I will also say that I have been in this establishment. I've seen staff checking IDs. I've seen them utilize their permit responsibly. I guess I just wanted to give the floor for anything that David Canute would like to say.
All right. Anyone else? There's no more discussion. All those in favor of approving or accepting the informal reports from standing committees and staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Next is a consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve as published? The common council minutes from 14th and 27th of November.
I will make a motion to approve the council minutes for November 14th to November 27th.
I'll second it.
I've got the motion by David, seconded by Ellen. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right. Our first agenda item is the approval of alcohol, or alcohol beverage license request by Canute Brewing Company at their new address of 230 Watson Street.
Now, is this technically in addition to the one that they have existing?
So yes. So this is a new application. The current, the current issue license across the street is not for an intoxicating liquor license. It's just for a beer or fermented malt beverage. So this is the larger license. So it's a new application.
Okay. Thank you.
And with this license, it includes beer, liquor, and wine.
Mm-hmm.
Full license.
Full license.
I move we approve the alcohol beverage license requested by Canute Enterprises LLC, Canute Brewing Company, 230 Watson Street for the period of December 12th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Ellen, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion on this one? Jolene?
Being that I see that David Canute is here with us right now, I like to always give an opportunity. If there's anything that they, he would like to say, the person that presented something, I will also say that I have been in this establishment. I've seen staff checking IDs. I've seen them utilize their permit responsibly. I guess I just wanted to give the floor for anything that David Canute would like to say.
All right. Anyone else? There's no more discussion. All those in favor of approving the alcohol beverage license for Canute Brewing Company at 230 Watson Street, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. All right. Our next item is alcohol beverage license request by AMW F&amp;B LLC, Pastimes Pub and Grill at 120 Scott Street.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Pastimes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved by David, seconded by Doug. Any discussion? Ellen?
I'd like Naomi to explain. There is a problem with what's written here and I'd like Naomi to explain it to the council.
Yeah. On the application on that top page, it says in the number 13, if you go down there, it says sold and consumed in the grass lot east of the patio. That has actually been removed from the permit and it's not on there. And I've actually emailed Adam and Adam Wagner, the new owner, is actually here in attendance as well. That is something that he knows and understands. You have to have a barrier if he wanted to include all that, or he can do it as a special event opportunity. So that is, that is not going to be part of this motion.
And if, just for clarification, if I'm not mistaken, LUD, if they could only use that grass area in a special permit?
Correct.
Because it is grass, not a hard surface.
Correct.
So the motion needs to be amended?
To reflect that it does not include the grass lot.
Okay. So the motion was by David?
Yes.
If you'd like to?
I will amend, strike the last part about the grass lot east of patio.
Thank you.
Doug?
That's fine. I'll still second the amendment.
Well, our friendly amendment. Any further discussion on this application? I'm glad to see that change because I did highlight that as an issue.
Same offer. The new owner.
I do understand all that David's email and yeah, I understand. So basically, if I, um...
Then the people at home can hear you.
So I guess the biggest question I had for the amendment, I would just basically come in for another town hall meeting, get the form from Naomi or whoever to, to get that amendment made and then show up. Because I feel like I've done this in the past, past, I've been at Pastimes before for a while. And they've done a September Fest cornhole tournament out there. And then we've had to get a temporary barrier out there. So I'm understanding of that. And I'm understanding basically I would have to come in for that special amendment if I did want to do that in the future.
Special event. Yeah.
Special event, yes.
Single.
Yep.
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 Opportunity.
Yep. And I am aware of that and, and accepting of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the alcohol beverage license request by AMW F&amp;B LLC, Pastimes Pub and Grill at 120 Scott Street with the amendment of removing sold and consumed in grass lot east of patio, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. All right. All right. Next up is the Business Improvement District Operating Plan. Once a year, the bid has to come to the council with their operating plan for a recommendation and approval. We have a couple of members plus myself from the bid board here this evening. You have the bid operating plan in your packet. Is there a motion to approve or do we want to start with questioning for the board?
I think a brief presentation would be in order.
Okay. We'll start with a presentation.
Okay. I'm Craig T. Bond, Ripon Main Street Executive Director. Been doing this since 1992. So a long time. But actually had here when I started. It's a whole other story. So we've been, for the last several years, we've been taking a greater look at this kind of document, crafting it, what kinds of things Ripon Main Street's going to do, what kind of things the bid is going to fund. And also, as well as, for a while, there was, I would call it perhaps a discrepancy between what Main Street did or was maybe supposed to do and what perhaps the city was supposed to do. And, and there's a much better understanding, much better communication, much better cooperation at this point. So I think the document just outlines that whole process. What we do, what Main Street does, what the city does, and our goals for the upcoming year. Nothing changes in terms of, of the assessment. That stays the same. The only major changes in terms of, of funding, in terms of, of funding, a new position for Ripon Main Street to assist with, with marketing and promotions and that kind of thing. We're looking at adding a couple of items to the downtown, maybe some digital directories, trying to bring the downtown into the 21st century. We're doing more with marketing and that kind of stuff. So it's in there.
Thank you.
I read it.
All right.
Any questions for Craig, TJ, or Dave?
This question comes on behalf of one of the business owners. And they wanted to know, can you explain more about any plans looking at specifically Blackburn Street?
Yes. So Blackburn Street, there are parking signs on Blackburn Street to try to direct people into the parking lots, the public parking lots. We've been doing some landscaping, planting trees, that kind of thing. We still want to do banners and, and brighten up the district. There's other things we'd like to do. There's just limitations over cost and, and that kind of thing. Certainly Blackburn Street's a very important component. 7,000 cars a day drive up the Blackburn Street corridor. And that's a critical piece of, of the success of downtown revitalization. So it's not just what happens on Watson Street. It's what happens on Blackburn, Jackson, West Fond du Lac, East Fond du Lac, the side streets. So, yes.
Thank you. And can you remind everyone when, if you're a member of the district and you, and I know you meet more than once annually?
Yes. Well, there's actually two ways to, to gather. Main Street meets on a monthly basis, second Tuesday, second Thursday of the month. There's that avenue to communicate with, with Main Street. The bid meets typically, we have a meeting in, in late winter. We have a meeting in spring. Couple of meetings to prepare the budget in, in fall.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept the operating plan?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid operating plan.
I'll second.
Been moved by Doug, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion?
I have a question there, Mayor. I've been looking this over and there are some non-voting members of the board. Is that correct? That are appointed, says here, it's Post Operating Plan D, D to D. In addition, the following representatives should be appointed by the mayor who should not be formal members of the board, therefore cannot vote, but who will represent the following constituency and advise the board and shall be notified of all board meetings shall be able to attend such board meetings to give input to the board. City of Ripon, one member without vote representing the city of Ripon. Ripon College, one member without vote representing the president. I'm just curious if the board have ever had non-voting members.
Well, we do have, we do have Adam from the city. He attends the meetings. I don't believe the college has ever utilized their appointment. But like I said, Adam does attend most if not all meetings.
And I would just say, some of the things they blend over between the Main Street, because there's Main Street Board, the Main Street Board has representation from the college on it. So they all kind of go hand in hand.
Just, just a curiosity. I just wondered about that. I have nothing further, Mayor.
Anyone else?
It's probably in this, I'm trying to find it, but did we keep the assessment percentage the same?
Yes. It's, I believe, 3.5%, which has been the same for many years.
Okay. Is there ever a need or anything to adjust that up? Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there is.
Not a desire.
The additional funding would always be welcome, but we also are aware that it would be a burden on the property owners if it didn't have a direct, immediate use. So that's why we elected to keep it the same.
I'll just mention that there's discussion about that. As value in the district increases as well, there's more to assess. There's more dollars coming in. So I think the balancing act there is, is if values increase, the, the number of dollars that can come in increase. So there's no need to adjust necessarily the, the percent of the mill rate.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the bid operating plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next is memorandum of understanding for economic development services between the city of Ripon and Envision Greater Fond du Lac. Adam, do you want to start this one?
Yeah. So Sadie, the CEO from Envision Greater Fond du Lac is in attendance as well. Since our last few meetings, talking over the budget and inviting the team from Envision to come to the city and talk, I found it to be probably appropriate to put something in writing. So from using some of our existing agreements, say with like the Chamber of Commerce, I did a, a quick memorandum of understanding for economic development services between the city and Envision. It's pretty simple. We tried to keep it pretty simple because the dollar amount here is $6,500 for that. Envision is committing to doing three hours a, a month minimum, office hours for business and entrepreneurship support. We have met. We met with Sadie, Joe, and Lisa. And then the following day, Raina from their team. I'm sorry, I'm not saying all their last names. It's just a lot of, but Raina came in and she's the one that is providing those services at MUGS currently. There's an opportunity to move them to City Hall. So I think we'll do that. And I think that just sets us up for a better, you know, environment to have meetings, as well as just city staff being able to meet with Envision or representation from Envision more frequently. There's industrial development support and then joint advocacy. There's the payment. And then there's the reporting element that Envision is saying they will come provide an annual report or an update to the common council before July 31st of each year, ahead of our budgeting process to then determine, you know, how things are going and determine future payments and amounts given. So happy to answer any questions. Sadie, if you want to speak to anything, you're certainly welcome to.
I need to. I would need to get answered his questions, but I don't need to. Sadie, come on up. I think so. I, um, I'd like to ask you a question because, so I've known Sadie because I've, you know, been a graduate of the Leadership Fond du Lac program that supports leaders from throughout the county. And I got to work with your staff actually even when I was a school counselor a number of years ago. So I've known and now of course that I work in Fond du Lac. I know, and being here, know Envision Greater Fond du Lac quite well. Can you say, it's just first of all, it's for people at home, for them to see you too, thank you for coming to Ripon tonight. Do you see, how do you see, you know, moving forward? Just wanted to hear from you. I love that we're going to be including an annual report. Anything you want to just say about sort of this relationship moving forward and maybe strengthening the bonds between the city of Ripon and Envision Greater Fond du Lac? I think that this is a, thank you for being, and to Adam, putting this in writing.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. And thank you for welcoming Lisa MacArthur and Joe Van Heisen last time. I was just finishing up my maternity leave. So that's why I wasn't able to be here in person. And he's actually sick at home tonight. So hopefully he'll, he'll be doing better. But in regards to the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, I was really happy that Adam proposed that. It's actually a pretty best practices by other economic development organizations. EDOs have these with their municipalities. And we do not have any MOUs right now. So Ripon is a first. And we're hoping that we can get that with some of our other municipalities as well. And I think it just, it does, it deepens, deepens the relationship. We've had a great working relationship with Adam thus far. And as that MOU and Adam alluded to a little bit, you know, this is, this is the bare minimum of services. And certainly we're going to be in Ripon more. We serve the entire county as it is. We'll continue to provide a lot of programming and entrepreneurship and, you know, all the things I know that Lisa and Joe touched on. So we continue to look forward to working with all of you. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
There's no more questions for Sadie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Ripon and Envision Greater Fond du Lac for economic development services.
I second it.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Next is the appointment of election inspectors, special voting deputies, and municipal board of canvas members for the 2024, 2025 election cycles. Naomi, would you like to address this one?
So every two years, the state requires that election workers be approved for the next cycle, which is going to be the 24, 25 election year. So I have included here the list of the election inspectors. There is also a small section where it's got the special voting deputies. Those are the people who go to the nursing homes or hospitals if they're told to go there where, where it's asked for. And then the board of canvas. And those are the people to go over after the election is done. They do the final tally, making sure everything is correct or is submitted to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved by John, seconded by Ellen. Any discussion? Been moved by John, seconded by Ellen. Any discussion?
I just, I'd like to thank the people that are volunteering to do this and it's getting harder every year. So the fact that these folks are stepping forward and do this, I just want to say thank you.
I agree. Anyone else? Jolene?
I think we would all agree, we would all say that. Is, I see some familiar names, I think I see some new names, is that correct, from years past? Yeah, that's, and are you at capacity? Are you still looking for new individuals to fulfill these roles?
I'm good now with badge books, it's good now, but you always have those instances. When you're good, you're good right at that line. So God forbid somebody else gets sick or something like that happens. So we're always looking for additional people.
And if people are listening at home, they contact you, maybe they could almost be on the waitlist, is that what I'm hearing?
Just contact the person.
Thanks.
All those in favor of appointing the election inspectors, special voting deputies and municipal board of canvas members, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. That's approved. All right. Next item is the 2024 general liability, property and casualty insurance proposals. We have two that are being presented to us tonight. Adam, would you like to start with this one?
Amanda, would you like to? Come on up, Amanda. Come on up, Amanda, you can, no. So we have two proposals in front of you. The last couple of years, we've reached out to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Company to get a proposal. The other, our current carrier is EMC. Amanda has taken the lead on, on putting this together and ultimately there's a price difference and it's in front of the council to make a decision on what direction we go. There are some subtle differences between each proposal. And ultimately, the reason we went down this path was when we started engaging EMC or Visance Dietrich Agency, so locally we work with Visance Dietrich Agency. They were projecting a larger than, a larger increase than the budget would really tolerate at a 12% increase, so you're talking tens of thousands of dollars. So we proactively approached the league again and got some numbers in place. So Amanda did all that, has put together some things, certainly Amanda, you can comment on it, but it's up, we're just seeking a motion from the council to accept one of the two proposals for 2024.
I will make a note, um, up until today, the league actually had gotten me, they had to do a little bit of tweaking. I tried my best to compare apples to apples to the both companies. So I did have to go back to the league, they had a couple extra vehicles that we no longer had. So the $214,000 that you see at the bottom of the page for the league has actually changed to about 216, removing the vehicles. And then they actually had a zero deductible, similar to what we have at EMC, so our, so our general matches as best it can. So taking that into consideration, like I said, it's at 216 instead of the 214, which is a, which is a difference of about 25,000, just a little bit shy. The other thing I will mention is that we do have a $10 million umbrella policy with EMC. When working with Drew on these figures, he, he did have a note and I have it on the sheet also, we could save about 10,000 if we dropped that 10 million dollars down to 3 million dollars, therefore making the deductibles a little bit more comparable and probably more so what the city needs in terms of, you know, in terms of, of coverage on those things. So if we, if we took that 10,000 off roughly, you'd still see a difference of about 15,000. If we went with the league versus EMC, we'd be saving about 15,000.
So a question for you on the analysis sheet. Just looking at the general liability, I assume that without the umbrella, EMC's occurrence is only 2 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. Same with like law enforcement, that would, yep, all of those, you'd just have to take the 10 million off.
Oh, I have a question. So that umbrella was dropped to what, 3 million?
It would drop to 3 million, yes.
So then the occurrence would drop to 3 billion dollars?
Five. It'd be five, because you'd still have, yeah, we, yeah, instead of it, you'd still have the 2 million, but you'd just add 3 million.
Right, right, I'm sorry, you're right. Um, there's a law enforcement, then we'd drop to?
Four.
Four million.
Yep.
Supposed to 5 million with the league.
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed, okay, yeah, I catch the umbrella.
Yep.
There was one other thing that I did notice is that the blanket, or the cry of the blanket E dishonesty, the league had much higher?
Yes, yep, mm-hmm. 250 as opposed to 100.
Right. And the inland marine, that's for what, watercraft?
No, I actually asked that same question. Apparently it's anything, it's anything that's a movable fixture, isn't it? Like any of our street sweepers, any of the, mostly DPW is. Mm-hmm. It's just called inland marine, I thought also.
Okay.
Obviously something that goes in the water, but no, I was wrong.
Okay. That's, wow. Is it boiler, is that really boiler? It seems awful high.
Um, that actually goes with your property, so it's.
Okay. Yeah, I did read that in there, now I just mentioned it.
Mm-hmm. That's just an additional coverage boiler policy that they call it.
Okay, so the public officials errors and omissions with, it's with umbrella, so if we drop that from 10 million to 3 million, what is that actually?
You'd be, you'd be at 5 then.
5 then, the same as the league.
Correct.
Okay.
But you're only saving nine, nine, if you'd remove the umbrella, you're only taking off 9,093 dollars.
9,993, exactly.
So it's still 6,000 dollars more.
Mm-hmm, yes.
No.
Um, no, 15. 15,000 dollars more.
You're right.
So pretty much head to head comparison.
Yep.
League is saving us 15 million.
Correct. 15,000.
15,000, sorry. Big difference.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice.
A 17 million dollar budget.
And on the, maybe you already mentioned this, on the bottom with the umbrella, the aggregate limit being none compared to 10, is that?
So the league doesn't have an umbrella policy over their other policies.
Is that a, can, is that a detriment?
No, I, I don't think so. Um, it, the way EMC does it is it's like additional coverage on top of the normal, like under your general liability. If we didn't have any sort of umbrella, we would just be at 2 million. Whereas, and, and sometimes that might be a little bit of an overkill situation to have that much. The league just doesn't offer an umbrella policy on their lines of insurance that they have.
And last question for me, did our local Dietrich agency, did they know that they were this far off?
Yes.
This is public record, right?
Yes, I shared, um, I shared the league's quote with Drew and then I also shared EMC's quote with my rep from the league. So both of them were able to see what the other one was providing.
Many of the quotes are very similar, but there are a few that drew my eye to, like I, like I mentioned, the public officials errors and omissions policy and the crime, the cyber limit was a little bit different.
Mm-hmm.
But they want an additional premium for that one?
Yes, yep.
EMC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which would then add a bit more to our payment.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
And Adam, you were saying, or reading on this, that with the league, they do have other bonuses or incentives?
Oh, other, they, yeah, the league does offer, so they have a kickback from Lexipool, both, both companies have that. But the league has, it's called Local Gov U, which allows the PD to get eight of their continuing ed credits online and then all of the utilities department is able to get their CE credits online. They also have safety grants that you can apply for, so to help with the DPW to keep, to keep their workers safe in, in the role that they play. I'm trying to think of anything else. Mostly Lexipool, that Local Gov U and then safety grants.
Additional trainings and conferences. So like the league has an, an annual insurance conference for their members and also training for, for common council members. We can certainly invite them in to be a part of onboarding, to talk about, you know, do education for the council. So, you know, one of the main differences is EMC does cover local governments, but it's a, it's more of a commercial, you know, provider, you know, whereas the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance solely focuses on municipalities throughout the state. You can see the number of municipalities that are a part of their, their plan. So obviously there's a local dynamic to this, there's a cost dynamic to this, there is a specialization dynamic to this with the league. So we're just seeking, you know, what balance and what, what, what makes the most sense for the city. Some of the stuff in EMC currently in our plan is a little bit much, but ultimately we can scale that back as well to make them a little bit more comparable. I will just say that we did this last year, EMC came in a little bit more competitive. My fear is, you know, just moving forward, we're going to have this conversation again and again, because if we're looking at seven or 12 or, you know, plus percent increases annually, we're going to continue to shop around because our budget is limited and at 200 plus thousand dollars, that percentage increase is, you know, 25,000 dollars, which is a lot of money annually to take as an increase, so. Yep.
It's a rat.
Are you guys comfortable changing, going with the league? Have you heard anything negative about them? I mean, is this, or is it all glowing reports?
So, so I'll just say, the reason we didn't shop this around more was because of our relationship with the Dietrich Agency locally, as well as our relationship with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Those are very important relationships, local relationships with businesses, as well as certainly the league and everything they do is incredibly important. They have been around for a long time. The number of, of communities that, that use them is, is quite a few in the state, including some of our, our neighboring communities. So we're comfortable whatever way we go.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept one of the two proposals? Or would you like to discuss it more?
I just got one question. What did we initially budget for it?
In the, in the budget, there's 215,000 dollars.
Is how much?
215.
Eric, Eric, I have a question for Adam. Where would we find the additional amount of money in the budget? We've already exceeded what we budgeted for, no matter how we look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're just going to have to pull it out of contingency or, or maybe there's a way to refine this more and bring it within a reasonable realm, but, you know, we, we were looking at our current rate and looking at a 5% increase, that's what we budgeted for. We knew that the league would come in at around 215, so we had that number as a base. We didn't get the renewal from EMC until a week ago. So, you know, that's how this works, they sort of put you behind the eight ball on this with renewals. So we would just absorb it in other areas of the budget.
Mayor, are you looking for someone to make a motion?
Uh, yep, motion for one of two proposals.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance, what's it called correctly? League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance at about 216,000 dollars or not to exceed 217, I don't know how you want to put that, because that number isn't exactly...
I would just accept the proposal.
Accept the proposal would be fine.
I will second that.
Been moved by Doug, seconded by David, featured just by Eric. Any discussion on that motion?
Are you comfortable with the cyber crime, the cyber?
Uh, are we comfortable? No, we, we are working actively, working to increase that. We have to, and I think we have to apply to it to get additional coverage on it. So we've been doing that, we just have to spend money to get to a point where we can get it, so we're doing that. So I would assume by January, we'll have things squared away with our IT company to be able to, you know, up that coverage, because it is important.
So is the insurance provider saying we don't have adequate infrastructure to cover more?
There is one holdup on it that we have to clarify with loyalty.
Okay.
So beyond that, we've, we've done the multi-factor authorization, we've done a ton of other stuff to get to a point where they'll actually quote us. Two years ago, they wouldn't even quote us.
So it's a?
It'll be about the same price, no matter which way we go.
Thank you. Just curious, do we file many claims throughout the year?
Yes and no.
Yes and no, okay.
It just depends, at a $5,000 deductible, a lot of times no. And then, you know, certainly there are times where we've had a couple of things that come up, but I wouldn't say more than three claims in a given year.
I was going to say five, probably.
Any further discussion?
Just, no, it's important that you have to have it because they do assist in adjusting the claims that you, some don't end up paying out, but they get adjusted.
I, I guess my comment is on this, if you think this is expensive, wait till you don't have it and then you have to pay money for it. So I look at this as something that's necessary for us to have to do.
Yeah, not having coverage is not an option.
No, it's not.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next item is the authorization to purchase a street sweeper. Adam?
Uh, in your packet, there's a staff report with some information and some quotes for a street sweeper. Reason it's in front of you now is because 2024, there will be a price increase, so we would like to purchase it and order it ahead of that. We will come forward then with financing, because we did, we're going to lease this piece of equipment. So the city currently has an LGN Pelican that is a mechanical sweeper. I would equate it to, you know, a very simplistic, a very simplistic example of what it does is, is it's basically a giant dust mop or broom, like with a dustpan, so it just kind of sweeps bigger things into a bin and it has a pretty small capacity. And then it can take up bigger things like mufflers and things of that nature, but it struggles with small particular matter and, and leaf collection and things of that nature. So when we started looking at replacing that outdated obsolete piece of equipment, we brought in two, two options would be the Ravel and the Booker City Cat. So the, the Ravel is, and, and the Booker are essentially vacuum sweepers. They have, instead of just a mechanical broom, they have an actual suction. So the, the comparison there is it's an actual vacuum. So we'd be essentially vacuuming the streets versus sweeping the streets. And that is a very big positive from the perspective of environmental, from the perspective of just leaf collection, so on and so forth. So we have some quotes here, there's demo units available. We would recommend just based on performance and overall product, the Ravel is a superior piece of equipment than the Booker City Cat. The, the new Ravel is 278,910 dollars, there's a demo... piece of equipment than the Booker City Cat. The new Ravel is $278,910. There's a demo unit available. They all come with the same warranties. It's about a two-year warranty for everything. You have kind of some information on both pieces of equipment. I have a video if you would like to see the Ravel in action. There's also, one of the reasons we would like to buy this piece of equipment is the the actual sweeper itself has a secondary suction tube that comes out the back, and you can clean catch basins, so on and so forth. So there's there's additional utility with this piece of equipment that we don't currently have on our fleet that could help within some of our goals from stormwater management and water quality discharge into the into the Silver Creek and whatnot. So happy to answer any questions. Show you a video if you'd like to see it in action. Big purchase, but we'd like to get it nailed down before prices increase by seven to 10%.
Are there dust filters on this that we have to replace all the time, or is it a self-cleaning?
Yeah, so.
Type thing, or because of you have the suction thing. So, you know, when it's pushing dust in, well, not dust, but it circulating air out the back of it, the way it looks.
Yeah, so it circulates air out. And this is a, this is considered a PM 10. It's particle matter 10. So as you can see here, it's just literally collecting the leaves right up. And it has basically a filter on the top. Every time you empty it, there's a hose on it. You can spray down the inside, clean that out, get water. There's water involved in it as well, so it's not as dusty. That's part of the component of this, where the water helps sort of, as you can see on the side there, get some of that particle matter to not be so, you know, dusty. You know, I had one of these pieces of equipment in my former community. It's quieter. It's hydrostatic. It is, it it has a capacity that is incredible, because it compacts the debris into the box on the back. And it can pick up everything from dirt to leaves to, you know, soda bottles to everything. So, you know, it's pretty incredible. It's a, this one doesn't even have the third broom. The third broom and the wand on the front can help with, you've seen enough. I'll show you this one. This one here, if you look at it here, this one will show the the wand, which we would have as an attachment. So this goes out front and it helps direct things to the to the to the main suction area, and it weeds as well. So it allows the curb and gutter to take the weeds out. And so, you know, that's an improvement from our current. And they're pretty slick machines. There's telematics, so, you know, we can have somebody remote into the machine to see if there's any errors with it. Very user-friendly, very visible. They're they're just a very European style of sweeper. So these these are coming to America in waves here. There are other sweepers that are American-made. You know, you have Elgin and others, but they are, they're way more expensive. They are hundreds of thousands more than this. So that is the Ravel. That's what we're recommending. And to your point of the dust thing, it's PM 10 certified, which is the highest certified. So it doesn't, it doesn't also discharge particles out the back. It has a filter and you clean it out and you change it out. And there's, there's a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of information out there on it, but yeah.
So looking at the two quotes for the new versus demo, looks like the new has a couple of things that the demo does not. The three years telematics is only listed on the new.
Yep.
And looks like different type of dump box.
Yep.
I don't know, Alan's not here tonight, but does Alan have a recommendation between new or demo?
So the demo unit, we did demo it here. It's got nearly 300 hours on it. It's a year older than what we would buy. You know, ultimately, the telematics thing is a, I think, a critical component of it. This is a very unique piece of equipment that if if we have issues with, we're going to need some help with. Survey Implement is out of, I think it's, what's that?
Brownsville.
Yep. So they're relatively close. They can help with it. Ultimately, I think, you know, would we prefer new? Yes. But obviously, there's a savings with going with the demo unit as well. So totally up to you as the council. Ultimately, we're going to finance it over time. We'll trade in our existing sweeper. It'll come off the top end of that or sell it, and we can probably put some cash at the end of year toward this as well to kind of keep it a little more tolerable, but yeah.
Since you're leasing it, is it going to, can you lease a new one?
Yes.
Okay. And what's would be the cost difference between the new and the used one?
It's really the goal is to get to a number, to lease it out over like five years and then have the ability to prepay it.
Right.
So so we're looking at, I think, like $45,000 over five years is what I believe we budgeted this coming year. So we'll have to continue to budget that. So we'll have to get that down to, you know, $25,000 or so. So between the two, couple of cash and whatnot, getting into that $45,000, obviously, is going to be easier with the demo unit. But, you know, I'm comfortable either way. We're not, this is a machine that we'll be using for 10, 15 years. So we want the best thing up front. The demo unit certainly works. It has been demoed by a lot of operators across the state of Wisconsin. So we know it works, but it's also been demoed by a lot of operators across the state of Wisconsin. So.
I have a question. Maybe you said it and I missed it. The the arm thing on the front, are they on both machines, the new and the?
Yes, they're on both. Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought, but it wasn't really clear to me.
So the place we're buying this from out of Brownsville?
Yep.
They've been there a long time, good company, solid, been selling these things for quite some time?
Yeah, they're the only rep in Wisconsin for this. Archie Survey is the, our main salesperson. He owns the company. He's been there forever. They do other, they do backhaul trucks. They sell other, they're an implement. They sell a lot of equipment. They're the only ones selling Ravel. They have a shop there. They have parts on hand there. It's in, I think that's in Fond du Lac County, right? So they're.
They're just outside of Campbell'sburg.
Yep. So so they're right, you know, relatively close. So if we have an issue with it, he said he'll be here in a day and and help us out. He let us, he let us use the demo for three days, you know. So we did demo, we had it buzzing around town for three days earlier this year. So, you know, I have no problems with them. We bought, I think my former community, we were the first or second community to buy a piece of equipment from them, a Ravel from them. And we bought a demo unit five, six years ago. There wasn't any issues real really with it, but that was 215,000 back then. So it's, it hasn't gone up in price that much. So overall, I'd be willing to go anyway with them. They seem to be solid and in our, they've been very accommodating with this request and letting us learn more about the machine.
What kind of warranty do they have?
Two years.
Two-year, 2,000 hour.
Yep.
John?
If we buy the new one, can we perform our own maintenance without avoiding any warranties? Or do we have to go back to the dealer?
We can, we can do our normal, like, maintenance on it. That's no problem. But if it's a warranted item, we'd likely have Survey Implement come and and help us with that. So there's going to, you know, certain things we can do, but there are some complex things on this. This is, this is an engineered piece of equipment. Yeah. So.
Okay.
What are the projected annual maintenance costs? I mean, what are we, are we going to have to, like, replace the brushes annually?
Oh, yeah. And and those are, that's a few hundred dollars. We have to do that anyway. So the the actual maintenance costs will probably be less than our current Elgin, because that thing is breaking down all the time. So so I would assume that. But but really, the idea, as long as you operate it correctly, you 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 grease it, all that, the only thing you're going to be changing on it frequently is is the brushes, which will be two, three times a year.
Do you happen to know how many hours a year we put on a sweeper?
I do not.
As I follow up to that question, though, do we know about how many hours are on the the used one? Because it's interesting, because where the other cities presented also with this used one, and we have it at this moment, because they decided not to go with it. Is that correct?
It hasn't crossed 250 hours yet.
It's 190.
Yeah, there's two, so it's approaching 300 hours. It's been demoed that much, the demo unit.
190 of it.
Yeah.
It's been more?
It's been more since then.
So if it's close to 300, it may void the two-year warranty?
It won't, they'll, they'll keep the warranty going. It's just, you know. But are you talking about our, the demo unit, or are you talking about our, our old, our old machine?
No, the demo unit. I mean, the reason why we have the ability at this city, if you said so many cities have demoed it.
Yeah.
They're also under the conversation of probably buying a new one, or why are they demoing it? And they chose not to buy it.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of places like new. Like, it's just, like, I was in a smaller community. We bought a demo unit because we were a smaller community, right? Of 1,500 people. A $215,000 machine is a lot of money, you know, compared, you know, we're a lot larger, you know, generally speaking, larger communities say, we'll pass on the demo, we'll take the new piece of equipment.
And if the other communities are like me, I see the, I know it's a $48,000 difference between the new and the demo. I see value in the new over the demo with the telematics option. There's a couple of small differences, but it's a year newer. It has no hours on it. I would see the value in the new.
I'll make a motion to purchase the new Ravel R5 for $278,910.
I'll second.
So are we going to want to get the three-point safety belt, or?
Yeah, that will, that's included.
It is included, yes.
Yep, that is included with the total price.
Any discussion on the motion?
Can we drive it?
There's two seats. So there's a passenger seat. So you can go, when we get it and we get it up and running, yep.
I'll take you up on it.
Yep, yep. They're pretty incredible. They can turn on it. I mean, they're, they're really.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the purchase of the new Ravel R5 for $278,910, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the cleaner streets. All right. Next item is an ordinance to create a community development authority. We've seen this before. Adam?
I just wanted to bring it back for conversation and or adoption. We had talked about this a few months ago. No action was taken. So this would create a Ripon Community Development Authority, giving it full statutory authority within the city, and then establish kind of the composition and procedures for that said CDA. There was a relatively active CDA in the city for a few years, many years. It, in 2012, it sort of fell apart. It's still sort of hanging out there, but there wasn't really a full statutory authority given to it to do some of the economic development and blight remediation and things of that nature. So this would be a, a full-blown CDA for the community. We would need, obviously, membership. That's not a part of this. We will need to make appointments if this passes. And we would look to then sort of begin meeting in early next year to discuss programs, discuss opportunities, and kind of formulate some some action plans and items that the CDA could assist with in terms of projects or priorities. Beyond that, it's adding another committee. So we had talked previously about, in some of the work with Allison Burnett, about Committee of a Whole structure, other committees, whether we're using them effectively. Certainly, you know, having more meetings isn't always great, or just more committees. So, you know, looking forward to, we may want to look at some of those committees and seeing if it's worth disbanding or bringing it back into the Committee of a Whole structure. That's a different conversation, but I know it's just a, a component of this is, okay, now another, we need another, you know, seven-member board. You got to meet. There's a lot that goes into that. But I think ultimately, we'll manage that if need be and and be as effective as as we can with this commission.
I move to accept the ordinance to create Chapter 2.62 Ripon Community Development Authority of the municipal code.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Ellen, seconded by Doug. Any discussion? Dave?
The other CDA we had, has that been completely legally disbanded? It no longer exists, or do we need to disband it?
I believe it has been, but that's a good point. We will triple-check. But I believe there was motion by the body. In that former document, I think it was more, they had to go through the Common Council for almost all approvals. So it kind of tied their hands.
Okay.
This one, as you will note, disbands on three-quarter vote of the Common Council. Otherwise, it's an independent authority, making decisions, raising money, doing all on its own without supervision by this body. So it's different than the last one, but a good point. We'll make sure the other one is completely disbanded.
Steve?
Mine was just, where was the money coming from? But you answered the question.
It's, it's independent. An independent authority.
And we do have money in the next year's budget, $16,000?
Yeah, so this is.
Started off. Until there's starter money.
Starter money, and then there's other opportunities as well.
Julian?
I think it's a creative. I want to commend our city for bringing this forward as we look at how to boost Ripon and our local economy. I, at first, I was going to say, I wish I could see sort of a, you know, a reporting requirement. However, anything that is going to be forward with this, I mean, we would know about it, because they would probably have to bring it forward anyways, if it was new. I guess, I'm trying to say, is there any sort of reporting that we'd like to see a report or include it, that we should include in this, or do we feel that that's covered?
I think through the minutes and through two members of this body being there, you have, you have the ability to report back and understand what's happening there. So I think that's, that would be my comments on it. I think this will work in tandem with a lot of the other things we have going on in the city. So.
So the minutes, of course, and saying, should be held with all open meeting laws, but would that be then, how do we, how does a person access them? Will it be on the city website, like just like on?
It'll be like any other, it'll act as a similar committee to any other city bodies.
Got it.
It's just, it is, it is an extension of this body.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the.
We'll call.
Oh, yep. You got it correct.
Iverson?
Yes.
Schottzinger?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Gallups?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Gottske?
Yes.
Sorenson?
Yes.
Split?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good, thank you. All right. Last item on the agenda here is 2023 housing report. Adam, do you want to start this off?
I think it's all me, so.
I have a guest here as well.
Yes. So we'll just start this, and I gave you all a copy on your desk, and I think, hopefully, Jonathan, you can see it as well.
Yep, I can see it.
Okay. Why is this doing? Okay. So. I don't want to do that. That is not what I want to do. Oh, my goodness.
Are we transcribing?
It's trans. How do you stop?
It's trans, how do you stop this? All right, I think we're better now, probably still doing it somewhere. So, I wanted to take a few minutes to go over the 2023 housing review, so we've done some programming, we've, we've done some efforts over the last couple of years, so I wanted to provide a, kind of a comprehensive review of where we are, what we've done, and where we can go. So in 2022, we approved the housing study, it was about a $10,000 effort, Veerbecker came in to do that study, there was a market component of it, a market analysis, as well as some recommendations. Since that time, we've been working toward implementing the priorities and the programs within that study. So in 2023, those kind of categorized into two areas, which would be new housing programs, and then new housing development and, and development agreements. And then I wanna talk a little bit about future housing issues and opportunities, code enforcement, affordability, advocacy, and then priorities, funding allocations. When looking at our current housing statistics and market, you can see that 2023 has been the best year for Ripon in a long time, in terms of new houses. The three-year average, leading up to 2023, we were building about, just shy of five houses a year. In 2023, January through November, we have 13 single-family homes being built in the community, as you can see, the average three-year cost of the houses prior to this year was $274,000, that has jumped to $345,000. So, in terms of housing development, we have had arguably one of our best years, and we have built more $350,000 homes in our community than we almost probably ever have, okay? In terms of single-family home sales, thank you to Joan Karsten for this information, in 2022, or sorry, in 2020, there were 105 single-family homes sold for the average sale price of $145,000. You can see the growth in the sale prices over the last three years, and year-to-date, 2023, there have been 60 homes sold in Ripon with an average home sale price of $205,000. That is certainly impacted by those new builds, because they are more expensive, but in previous years, you can see, from 2020 to 2021, there was about an 18% increase in average home sale price, the following year about 12% increase, and then this year another 7%. So the average increase over a three-year period has been $60,000, the average home sale increase. That is not uncommon, Fond du Lac County has been named like, the worst housing statistic in the US in terms of the largest increase of, of home price sales increase, like, in the nation, like, over the last few years, so we've had the largest growth at like 18%. So we're seeing that here as well, it's, it's a very unhealthy market, so it's not something you wanna lead the nation in, but it just shows you that, you know, there's definitely a housing crisis here, and that costs are rising dramatically due to a lack of supply and other factors, right? So that's where we're at, and this is pretty telling information, if there's any questions during it, just let me know, okay? So in 2023, we did do three new housing programs, the exterior home repair program, the Sandmar Lot, Sandmar Lot Sale Program, and the Ripon Housing Program, Ripon First Housing Program. So we launched the exterior home repair program in February 27 of 2023 with an allocation of $65,000, that was all TID extension funds, we had a total of 20 inquiries, with a total application pool of 16, with a total of 14 awards, we awarded the full $65,000, we have paid out $36,000, $36,682 to date, you can see some pictures there of what we have done for some of the individuals and property owners in our community, new roofs, window replacement, house painting, front deck, porch, rehab, et cetera. The average award was $4,642, the average age of the home was 84 years, the average home value was 94,000, assessed value was 94,800, the average household income was $36,426, and the average home size for those 14 awards was 2.2 people. So that is what, that, that program, all funds have been allocated, it is a very time-intense program that my office managed, we worked through a lot of applications with people to ensure that they weren't taking advantage of the city, so, but as you can see from the statistics, the intention was to help those in houses that were, that needed repair, you can see that in the value, and help those individuals that are in lower income, and you can see that from the overall household income statistic. The Sandmar Lot Sale Program was approved by this board on January 23, 2023, with $120,000 allocated, 50% of that came from the TID extension and 50% from the actual TID, all funds were allocated by February 21, 2023, didn't even take a month to sell six lots to four different buyers, six homes were started for construction in 2023, all are anticipated to be done within the one year, the average construction cost, 292,000, and the anticipated tax value or increment value is 1.8 to 2 million dollars. Arguably, this is our most successful housing program in the city's recent history, the reason why we had 13 houses built this year is because of this program, and Sandmar looks dramatically different today than it did a year ago because of that program. Ultimately, the program had a lot of interest, and by the second grant application, it became very easy to, to handle, we, we have a process, and, and that's why we were able to essentially award grants in a matter of a month, and get, get builders working on building their homes out there. Those houses, a lot of them are currently for sale, so we hope to continue the program, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but the Sandmar Lot Sale Program, again, it's sort of a forgivable loan, so ultimately, a solid program for us. And then we did do the Ripon First Housing Program, was the $15,000 we allocated on August 28, we've had no applications received to date, we've sent outreach to local realtors and lending institutions. So we're waiting on that one to, to kind of take off, but obviously, when, if you're a first-time homebuyer, if you see the dramatic increase in home costs, there's probably a reason why this program's not being used, as first-time homebuyers are being pushed out of the market. New developments, I forgot to add when it was approved, but we did approve the development agreement with SC Swiderski for the 64-unit, about a $9 million project, again, one of the larger housing projects that we have had in our recent history out in the Sandmar area, SC Swiderski has been working with my office to finalize their, their, their plans, and then get to civil engineering, so that project will be moving forward into 2024, as planned, with maybe some tweaks in the overall site plan, just based on, based on the site and what, what they wanna do with it. We added the first right of refusal to the 35 acres at, with the Ripon Area School District property, so that, that's an important piece, potentially, for the future, and then there are additional opportunities in the works, including the closed session later tonight. Housing code enforcement, we proactively perform code enforcement in residential districts through our online platform, residential code enforcement and blight removal is critical component to our housing market, and to keep a strong and healthy housing environment, and clean and attractive neighborhoods. You can see some of the statistics here, the summary of housing code violations, so the, the police department is actively using this platform and, and issuing notices and citations for unlicensed vehicles, storage of junk, and then I actually took a more active role over the last year in doing nuisance dilapidated properties, so there's a picture there of a house that we sent a letter to in August 2023, and three months later, it's the same house after sending them a letter. So there's been activity there, support from the council for these efforts is critical, because it's no fun sending people letters about their junk properties, but it's something we have to continue to be serious about and do to maintain a healthy housing environment. Terms of affordability, I would say that the largest issue, clearly, in our community and across the state of Wisconsin, and probably everywhere at this point, is affordability. I wanted to provide some perspective, these are wages, and 30% of income going toward a monthly mortgage payment at 7% for 100, 150,000, 200,000, and then up to 400,000. What someone can afford, right, and what occupation they have. So as you see here, the data we've, we've collected is from conversations with lawyers, information from Invision Greater Fond du Lac, as well as other online resources. So when you're looking at the positions that are available in our community and the salaries they are making, so a starting teacher, somebody working in, in one of our major manufacturing businesses, we have a note there about all occupations, Fond du Lac County, so the average person in Fond du Lac County is making $46,760. What can they afford? So, and this is just single income, and you can see that when we're talking about affordability, you get into carpenters, teachers, police officers, so on and so forth, can barely afford at a 7% interest rate, a $200,000 house. If you look at the number of $200,000 homes available in Ripon, there are likely three or four choices currently. When you look at the houses that we are building at $350,000, we struggle to have the incomes for some of our major employment needs, right, in positions, right, so nurses, professors, so on and so forth, our median household income is $52,545, that's about a $200,000 house, okay? So I think this paints the picture of the jobs and, and the incomes in our community, when we talk about affordability or low income or anything like that, there is, these are real positions, these are teachers, these are construction workers, and the market is incredibly difficult right now for individuals, particularly ones that aren't in a relationship or having double income, to afford the type of housing we have available in our community, right? So this is by far the biggest challenge we will try to tackle as a community, and there are examples out there of communities doing it successfully, but it is going to be the hardest effort we have. Frankly, it is a lot easier for us to continue down the path of just building $350,000 homes, there's a larger tax base, the developer or the person can make more money off of it, however, we are leaving an entire component of our workforce in our community behind by taking that approach, okay? In terms of advocacy and partnerships, Kat Griffith is here, she's our, one of our representatives from Fond du Lac County, we've had community meetings, we've talked to the county about dollars, certainly Kat, if you want to say anything about the county's position, you can do that, or county's not, or what you're seeing, Kat and I talk a lot about this issue, because it's an issue that I think she has found to be of paramount concern in Fond du Lac County, but I just, I've been talking a lot with her and what we could do at a county level, so I invited her to come tonight as well.
Thank you so much, and I, yeah, I wanna thank you, Adam, for being willing to talk with me, we've had a lot of really nerdy, wonky conversations about housing. I, I wanna start by saying that I'm really impressed with the dynamism around housing that I'm seeing here in Ripon, and I wanna applaud your efforts. I love that Ripon is using a multi-pronged approach that includes support for fixing up older houses, building new ones, supporting first-time homebuyers, creating both single-family homes and rental units, I'm really excited to see the projects that you already have up and running, and the ones that are in the pipeline. I also really appreciate what Adam has just said, that the city is taking a good, hard look at what affordability means here. I'm glad that we're having necessary conversations about where to focus attention, and how to use the tools and resources that are available to us. I'm glad to see the city looking for ways to partner and, with, and take advantage of local, state, and regional programs and agencies, copycatting some things, looking for, you know, grant opportunities and that kind of thing, I think it's really important to try to bring in some outside resources to stretch and supplement what we have locally. I wish that I could say to you that Fond du Lac County was gonna come forward with robust help for housing, right now, I can't say that. I wanna explain a couple of the constraints that make this difficult for the county. The first is that housing has not historically been really part of the county board's agenda, and so it's not part of our organizational structure, this makes it hard to even have conversations about it. Open meeting laws, I mean, you just, you, you can't just sort of say, hey, wanna talk about housing? So, yeah, it's, it's hard. Also, members of the board have real differences of opinion about whether the county should address housing and what its role should be if it does, we don't yet have a shared sense of urgency or vision of how to proceed, and we don't have a committee structure that will make it easy for us to get there, this has been a great source of frustration to me personally. Our county wage study has also just underscored that we have a lot of catching up to do just to make our wages average among counties, we have a number of positions that are getting very low pay, and our people get poached all the time, we have permanently open positions, for example, among social workers, permanently open positions among van drivers for elderly people, just can't fill them, we have jobs that pay $12 an hour, good luck with that. So our wage study has shown, yeah, we need to boost it, and just to get to that 50th percentile mark is gonna cost us about 1.7 million extra dollars a year, so that's a big chunk of money for the county. So our financial resources are even more limited than they were before. However, that said, there are still some avenues left to pursue, I've recently been appointed to the Fond du Lac County, or not the county, the Public Housing Authority, which is for both the city and the county, and I'm learning about what we can do there, and there, there is at least one person who's kind of excited that, I'm excited, I've also been invited to the Winnebago Land Housing Coalition, which is a tri-county group that involves AdvoCap and other government agencies, as well as private actors, so I expect to be going to a few meetings this year, and I will be looking for ways to connect Ripon with resources, ideas, and potential collaborators, I'm really looking for where the action is, I'm, I regret that it's not on the county board, I have tried to work with the county board, and there are both good and bad reasons why that's not getting very far, but there is a final avenue, I think, open to us in Ripon, and that is to be an example of what a smart, sustained commitment to housing looks like, I think if Ripon continues on the path that we're on now, we may inspire other municipalities to move forward, and eventually the county. People love to join a winning team and be part of a success, getting it right here could create a virtuous cycle, and eventually bring more resources our way. So I wanna thank you all, and I'm really grateful to Adam for, for the leadership that he's shown on this, and, and all of you, for your efforts to ensure that Ripon remains a beautiful, livable, welcoming, affordable, small city. And if anybody would like to talk to me outside of this meeting about stuff with the county, I'd be more than happy to talk with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so the county has, has put, there's been some pressure put on the county to get into this, there's obviously a vote with Campbell's Port allocating nearly a million dollars to housing projects there, so there's, there's been discussions, there's also been community meetings that I participated in with the administration from Wapon, Campbell's Port, North Fond du Lac, Invision Greater Fond du Lac is there as well, and Fond du Lac County, there's hopes to do some more education, and probably presentations much like this at a county level next year, the county executive has said that the housing issue won't come up until the next election is done, so that's April, we frankly don't have time to wait for the county, we have to push forward as a community to, to continue our efforts to, to tackle this issue. So with that, creating the CDA, which you just did, can become a component of what, a tool in our toolbox to help with this issue. New state programming, there's a lot of... New state programming, there's a lot of WIDA programming coming out for commercial renovation projects and and loans, low interest. There's upper unit developments, remodels for downtown commercial district programs. So looking at those programs and partnering our dollars with those dollars to have a more attractive environment and then partnering with other local nonprofit part, you know, nonprofit partners in the county and in the region to see if there's any ability to to work with them if there's not additional support from the county or the state level. Ultimately, you know, what I find to be the priorities and looking into 2024, I would like to bring Veerbecker back to address the housing study. I think that there is an opportunity to update some of the market analysis, as well as develop concepts and put some pen to paper for larger housing projects and programs, okay? Actually, looking at maybe the 35 acres and developing a plan, so people can begin to see the vision and maybe, maybe, just maybe, there's the ability to copy or or mimic some of the partnerships with counties around that that we see in counties around us with the county here. Fund the Sandmar Lot Sale Program in some capacity next year, fund the expenditure or the the exterior home repair program in some capacity, and then look at affordability issues, really, really digging into, are there projects that are specific to affordability that we can tackle? Ultimately, that again is going to be the hardest part of this, because just the cost of housing is, to build a house, is is way higher than than, you know, what more most can afford. Currently, we have unplugged dollars totaling $327,000 in our TID housing extension fund. We anticipate TID V closing, so there'll be just north of about a half million dollars in 2024 and 2025. That can go directly into housing, affordable housing, and fund some of these programs. So there are dollars there. Spending it wisely and getting the biggest bang in return our investment is critical. Clearly, building a new $350,000 house is going to be a bigger return on our our investment in terms of taxes compared to the exterior home repair program, but it doesn't mean we just abandon those as well. So there, you know, these these resources that we have aren't forever. Once they're gone, they're gone. But how do we leverage these into possibly bigger programs or other partnerships? So that's what we'll be looking at, as well as putting some bigger concepts together. I don't, there's no action necessarily needed from the council tonight. I think if there's, if there's any comments or questions, or you want to talk after the meeting about things you've seen, as well as, we'll bring forward again some funding opportunities into the new year to fund some of these programs and reissue some dollars to go out to continue some of the 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 momentum we have from 2023.
Well, thank you, Adam.
Do we have any questions on his report?
This was a part of the the housing study, and I know, Adam, you had brought this up from talks at the larger, even state level, and I believe your previous city, about multigenerational housing. How does that maybe fit into this picture and allowing that, you know, we know that maybe there are families that would like to have their parents with them and making sure that that's something that they can do here? And does that help fulfill some of the needs that are present here?
And so you're talking about having like, like...
I bring it up because I thought that that's, this is what you, sometimes we have codes against that.
Oh, we've done code reform. We've done code reform to allow accessory dwelling units. You know, people are are able to have some more flexibility within a zoning code to add on to their properties and and have more lot coverage, so they can put in addition on that may be a, you know, a parent parental suite or something of that nature. So we don't see a lot of people doing that. It's just not, it's not gaining the traction, but it's allowed. In terms of, in terms of, you know, multigenerational or or aging community, a lot of the things that we likely will be building will be places for those individuals. That's just the way it sort of works. If you build, even though they're a little bit pricier, it allows them to maybe sell their house and and move into a more independent or, you know, an easier living situation. But everything is on the table, Jolene. There's, there's no, there's first-time home buyers, you know, our aging population, families, every single thing needs to be on the table, because we are in such a bad way that any unit we add is critical at this point.
Another question, I see that, you know, you had just mentioned that the Sandmar Lot Sale Program is a priority to fund in 2024. Why didn't we include that in the in the budget?
There's, there's $150,000 allocation, so we just, from fund 22. So we don't want to blow all of our money that's in this fund, because there may be some very critical, important opportunities, but we'll bring back a proposal to fund that program in January with a component of that $150,000. So it may not be the six again, it may be less. There may be a little bit of fatigue from building out there, so we don't want to just put a bunch of money out there and then not have it used. So we have to find the balancing act where we continue the momentum, but but also don't just get tunnel vision on just one program.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Again, thank you, Adam. And now we're up to project update staff reports. PD, Naomi?
Just a reminder to anyone out there, there is one seat on council in each district, so we have four seats that are available right now. If you are interested in running for a council position, just call the city clerk's office or come see me.
All right. Adam?
You have my report in your packet. So we posted a position today with the Assistant Director of Public Works. We also have an opening in Public Works for the Administrative Assistant that we posted recently. We completed the CDBG income survey for the Hamburg Penny area that resulted in the ability to qualify for a CDBG application, so we'll continue to work with MSA on that. The tax bills went out today, so the overall mill rate was an increase in the community of 87 cents to $22.79. Of that increase, the city's was 7 cents or the lowest of the increased, of the increase by the taxing jurisdictions within the city. The DPW facility, we had a meeting, will present next month. This is our last meeting for this year. So next month, we will have an update on the DPW facility for the council. We also have to talk about the water tower design and pick a painting or pick a design, so the council will have hopefully some options that we can bring forward. And then I just want to express gratitude to our staff and their participation in Dickens of a Christmas over a couple of weeks ago, from the entire PD participating in in keeping the event safe, to EMS and doing similar things, as well as participating in the parade, our Parks and Rec Department doing the Run Santa Run 5K, and then even our office staff, including Naomi, Amanda, and Karen, getting in inflatables and and being in the parade. That is the level of engagement from our staff that I'm very proud of. It's something that we haven't done that holistically or in that depth with that event ever, I think. So we will continue to to do that, because it exposes our city, you know, it exposes our staff to the community in a very positive way, and and I think it creates smiles. So that's very important. So thank you to all of our staff for their commitment to to making and enhancing the things that are happening in this community.
Fire department was monitoring the fire barrels, keeping them going and safe.
They don't report to me, so. But yes, it was, it was beyond just, so yes, thank you, the fire department, countless people and volunteers, and the chamber certainly puts on that event, but it cannot be as successful as it is without our 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 support from our staff.
Thank you, Adam.
You bet.
The only thing I want to say is, as Adam mentioned, this is our last meeting of the year. Have a good, safe holiday season, and we'll hit the ground running with continued projects next year.
A reminder maybe of the hours of the city over the holidays. Is there anything we want to say?
City offices closed on December 25 and 26, as well as January 1 and 2.
Be sporadic at times, too. People got time to burn. I'm just kidding.
Are there any future agenda items or comments from council?
Doug? Just curious about when the hotel study is going to be coming forward?
I would hope next month. It's been delayed. I'm not happy about it, but essentially what has happened is some of the market analysis that's being done, there are a couple hotels that are being remodeled and or built in our direct area, meaning Oshkosh. So that's impacting some of the numbers, so they want to get it right.
All right. Just was wondering. Thank you.
Yep.
In that case, I'd be seeking a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statutes 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This would be to discuss a development agreement for Kensington Drive Utility Extension, as well as reviewing minutes from the November 27 meeting for accuracy. Motion made by Terry, second by Ellen. All those in favor of adjourned to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn to closed session.